Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would think that. And we actually had a really nice show where we shut the one, you know, and they ran over the I know program. And, uh, so we just wanted some answers. And they put together a nine-page packet. It was a proper way to flush ideas. It is really cool with an aspect of it. So I was really nice. Honestly. Just kind of stuff that we don't have full map.
I heard that reflects particularly on the phone.
Yeah. Called on the, uh, law. I mean, it's stupid. Well, you know, how do you call the market? Yeah. I don't play attention. It's just this, it is. File system. That doesn't look great. I guess it's, uh, yeah.
Okay, folks, we are off here and accounted for. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7:00 P.M. We'll start off with council members silence, please. If you can stand, so I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will ask everyone to either silence or turn off their cell phone. Council members, be reminded to turn on your microphones. Make sure that the green light is showing. City Clerk Domingo, if you take roll call first, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Lenoe.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here.
They have a motion to approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Support. Any additions, deletions? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lenoe.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. This evening, we'll, we'll start off with a couple of presentations. Uh, first, we will hear about our county transit, uh, system initiative. Doug and Mallory, um, are here to give us some information, um, so that we can hear what the county is working on. Floor is yours.
All right. Good evening, uh, council members. Thank you for having me and, uh, Mallory here. My name is Doug Farrell. Uh, I've been with the county four years and, uh, ever since I started, we've been working on transit and I'm told it was, uh, been worked on for many, many years before I got here. And, uh, introduce yourself.
I'm Mallory Avis. I'm the Public Transit Director for the city of Battle Creek. Uh, same as Doug, I came in 2019 and kind of immediately jumped into these conversations that were ongoing.
So, uh, you can go ahead and jump to the next slide. You may have heard about the transit study that was done, it was starting, you know, three, four years ago, we started it. And it was to take, take inventory of the transit systems in Calhoun County, what existed already, uh, and then see what could we do to provide a countywide transit system instead of just having one system in Battle Creek, you know, the Albion-Marshall connector, having, uh, different dial rides, uh, bringing them all together, uh, under one system. And it took a while to get this out because we were in a meeting a couple of days before shutdown, uh, two years ago, and we were coming up with the idea of, okay, how do we kick this out? How do we bring this to the community? And then everything shut down with COVID, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, so really the last few months, we've been bringing this back and really sharing the recommendations for the transit study. So that's where we've been for the last two years. It was, uh, you know, we were kind of all just in survival mode there, but we're excited to bring this back. The transit study recommendations, if, if you were around for two years ago, we did send that out, we did a couple of presentations, maybe you were part of the committees that met to discuss countywide transit. Uh, these recommendations reflect that study, but we do have some changes. One of the big ones in that everything we're going to talk about is really looking at this as a one authority over all transit in Calhoun County. That is kind of the, the general way you can look at transit. And, uh, the Inquirer kind of beat us to the punch before our, uh, our presentation today. We just had an article about this in the paper this weekend. So as we look at transit study, uh, you might see, uh, some changes from the original study to what we're talking about tonight, but really when we talked to the city of Battle Creek, the city of Marshall and the county, it wasn't feasible to have all of these, you know, city of Battle Creek to maintain, uh, their current system and not be a part of authority. So again, everything would fall under one authority is a big change and we'll talk more about that as we get into it. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. And, and that's how this system would work with other providers. You know, you would have one authority that would oversee all transit in the county, whether that be for someone here in the city, for someone in Homer, for someone in the Duck Lake area, or in the city of Battle Creek. It would be one transit system over all of it. You can go ahead and go to the next slide.
Okay. So you may have seen, um, that recently BC Go was launched by Battle Creek Transit as a pilot. And this pilot was funded by the Michigan Department of Transportation for one year. The pilot was to demonstrate the feasibility of on-demand countywide transportation and essentially coordinated transportation. So our goal here is to coordinate our services with other providers so that we're not duplicating services. As we, um, launched BC Go, we took our service area from 70 something square miles in the city of Battle Creek to over 700 square miles to cover the entire county of Calhoun. We did that with only two vehicles. So if you will go to the next slide, please. Through that, we have been able to demonstrate that there is a clear need for transportation in Calhoun County. And this was our goal, but this far surpassed what we expected and even what the results of the, uh, countywide study showed us. So to date, we have 2,154 current unique users, um, registered with BC Go. And this covers the entire county again. We've had, uh, 35,000, more than 35,000 trip requests. However, because we're operating such a large area with only two minivans right now as a pilot, we're only able to accommodate about 23% of those rides. So just over 8,000 trips have actually been completed. And this information was as at our one-year mark, which was March 8th. Today, we're closer to 40,000 total trip requests, but our completion rate remains about the same. We've transported 9,106 passengers, which demonstrates that this really is a shared ride service, which is what, um, makes it operate more efficiently and as public transportation. 60% of our rides are booked on the BC Go app. Um, an app isn't required. People can still call our dispatch office and book, uh, ride over the phone. They can talk to a human, ask questions, um, and still get that kind of, uh, customer service that people are looking for, but you also have the option of downloading an app, very similar to Uber or Lyft. It'll notify you when your ride is coming. You can pay for it through the app. And at the same time, it pairs you with people traveling in the same direction. So roughly 30% of our trips are a shared ride. So this means if you were traveling to St. Marshall and somebody else was going from Marshall to Battle Creek, we may stop on our way to dropping you off and pick somebody else up so that it keeps our service efficient and affordable. 12% of our trip requests have been outside of, uh, the city of Battle Creek. And so that's just the origination, not necessarily the destination. So, um, that's roughly 4,000 total trip requests. And as we've seen that data increase over, um, the last month, that percentage is staying about the same. Next slide, please. When we look specifically at the city of Albion and how BC Go has impacted the city of Albion, we've had a total of 127 trip requests for the city of Albion, and we've been able to provide actually 31 of those. So roughly the same percentage, um, on a smaller scale, covering the city of Albion. The primary destinations that people are going, so that's only measuring Albion as the origination of the trip. On the primary destinations are Battle Creek, uh, within Albion, Marshall, Homer, and Springfield. The key locations within Albion are the Amtrak station is the most popular location, which shows that people are using BC Go as a first last mile solution. So, um, instead of leaving a car or relying on a car to get to or from their regional connection, um, or interstate connection even, they're using a ride share service. Um, the hotels, so, uh, Courtyard and Days Inn were the most popular hotels, um, but there was a, also another motel that was in the area that people were using. Family Fair and Dollar General were also, um, and that signifies shopping, right? Access to groceries, um, and, uh, Dollar Tree as well, the plazas there was another location. And then multiple residences. So Albion actually had one of the higher number of specific residences, which probably, um, correlates to the destination. So people are originating at their home in Albion and traveling for work, school, or medical care outside of the city of Albion. Next slide, please.
So as we jump back to the transit study to see, you know, what the recommendations were, we set up goals, right? Like any good committee, we had our goals of, of what would transit be in Calhoun County? So you can kind of see these as kind of the guideposts, the tenants of public transit. And these would likely transfer if an authority was actually created. So first up, this is being created to make sure we have equitable access to all county residents, that being every city, every rural area, um, having the ability to have transit. Connecting those communities, you know, a lot of times rural communities, um, don't have transit at all. So making sure we can connect the rural areas to the urban areas so they can get to services, medical appointments, and even connecting those multiple urban areas for doctor's appointments and so forth. Providing mobility for vulnerable populations and those, uh, you know, whether they be veterans, uh, people with low income, those with disabilities, making sure that the most vulnerable that may likely need transit even more, uh, that this would be available to them. Transit services will be designed with customer in mind, uh, just making sure that they're understandable, affordable, safe, comfortable, and convenient. And this kind of goes into the next point too, that people are going to want to book however they want to book. Some people might want to use a telephone and call and book a ride. Some people might want to use an app, some people might want to use a computer. Uh, so making sure all of those things would be available to people so that it would be comfortable however people want to, uh, if they want to talk to a person or if they just want to click a button and get a ride, making sure all of those are possibilities. We also had workforce and economic development stakeholders as part of the authority or as, uh, the stakeholder group when we were doing the study, uh, and really bringing that workforce group in to say, okay, what do we need to do? And I don't think transit is going to solve every workforce problem we have, but we know we have a lot of issues with getting to and from work. Um, so partnering with our workforce, uh, and economic development agencies to make sure we're at the table and part of those conversations and hopefully part of the solution. Go ahead and jump to the next slide.
So when we, um, established what might a budget look like for a comprehensive countywide transit system, the easiest way to kind of ballpark some figures was to create three separate service scenarios. And so in that we created a good, better, and best. The, uh, blue indicates where the service level changes from one proposal to the next. So you can see from the good plan, um, there's no Sunday service, Saturday service still stops at 5:00 P.M. Um, and there's limited service throughout the weekday. The better scenario extends your weekday hours a little, gives you a little bit longer service on Saturday, but still doesn't solve your Sunday transportation issue. And then the best scenario not only maintains the changes for weekday and Saturday service, but then adds demand response, which is the door-to-door countywide service we're talking about on Sundays as well. Now, obviously that is a, a price tag, you can see of close to $10 million. And as that correlates to a millage rate, um, that was calculated at the time we put this together, it's roughly 1.2 mils. And that is a combination of state and federal grants, passenger fares, and then a millage as a dedicated funding source. Next slide, please.
I just had a question about the DR and FR.
Yes. Sorry. So DR is demand response, which is door-to-door, and FR is fixed route, which is the big, uh, 40-foot buses that you see around the city of Battle Creek.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's what we were talking about is that it's good to remember that this would take city of Battle Creek, what they're currently doing, put them together under one authority so that demand route, that the fixed route in Battle Creek would be part of it. So next steps, what, where are we at now? Right now, we're informing the community. Uh, you know, we're really lucky to have that, that article in the paper and we're starting to talk about it more. We want people to talk about it, to talk about it with their elected officials, um, so you can start getting feedback from your constituents. And that's a big part of what we're doing. We're also looking at how would we actually form an authority? What would the board structure look like? Timing, um, in the, in the next point to say, okay, is this doable? And if so, if so, how? So the county's still working through the authority piece right now with our corporate council and obviously we have elected officials too that we're giving these same, uh, presentations to and they're starting to talk to their constituents. Next slide, please. One of the things you may, uh, receive from county administration is, is a letter of support for an authority if this does move forward, uh, really formally gauging where the support levels are at from the various municipalities, uh, because it's not going to work if, um, you know, municipalities aren't supportive. So you may see that come from county administration in the next, I mean, we, we could be up to a year out from that really, um, you know, six months or so before we'd be requesting that, but that would come likely from the Board of Commissioners or from Kelly Scott. And one of the other things we're working on is having a transition manager. So, uh, countywide transit is a very small part of what Mallory and I are doing. You know, uh, we see the need, uh, we've helped a lot with the transit study, um, but really bringing on an expert that could help form an authority. And one of the reasons we need to do that is there are so many, uh, when you're talking about combining these different agencies, there's lease agreements, there's space agreements. You know, city of Marshall has their own system. What happens to that? Does it get swallowed into another piece? There's a lot of different things. So really having somebody that could dedicate a lot of time. Um, so if it's not Mallory or I here next, it might be a new person, a transition manager that we'd bring in specifically to, to help create this. Uh, and then another thing we're doing is this municipal outreach and specifically on townships, for those of you that, you know, ever, we all know people in the townships. There's other elected officials in the townships that we need to get out and talk to. So we are still working on probably midsummer, doing a summit for all the townships to come to, just because there's so many of them. Um, so you can kind of keep an ear out for that. Next slide. That's it?
Yeah.
Uh, questions?
Have any questions? Yes.
Yes. Um, thank you, Mayor. So right now, what's the current cost? Do, is it cost per mile or how is it set up?
Um, so there's multiple ways to gauge it. Um, there's cost per vehicle mile, there's cost per vehicle hour. Um, that is how we establish the budget. So we kind of worked backwards to, to establish the budget using Battle Creek Transit's existing cost per vehicle hour. So we took that cost per vehicle hour, which includes all overhead, and, um, created a service scenario, how many hours of service is that service scenario, and then applied the, um, cost per hour to the service scenarios. So that's how we got the good, better, and best scenario.
Okay. Um, cost-wise to, let's say, I want to use the BC Go, um, and I want to go to Battle Creek from here. What's that cost look like?
Um, so BC Go currently is based on mileage and our mileage costs range, the fare for that ranges from $3 to $15, and $15 is the cap there. Um, ultimately, whatever, the fare structure would be decided by the governing board, which is of, which is the authority of the transit system. So if there was a directive from the authority board, um, to establish a different fare structure, that, that would be up for debate.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Lenoe.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, thank you for all your hard work. I know transit's, um, very complicated and, um, I appreciate, um, the, the longevity of this work that you're doing. Um, I'm curious about the, um, way in which you're matching people, um, with, with Albion kind of being on the outskirts. Um, I'm just curious how you decide who gets to, to have the transit in, in the current model for BC Go.
Yes. So right now, everything is an algorithm through a technology platform called LiftTango. So, uh, the technology platform essentially, um, prioritizes trips to meet the maximum capacity of requests. So, um, every 15 minutes, it kind of reshuffles and if it can reallocate rides to a different vehicle to accommodate a trip further away like Albion, um, then it would do that. However, right now, because it's centralized out of Battle Creek, that's why you see such a low number for Albion because the efficiency is closer to Battle Creek. So if it were zoned differently, um, you know, if there were vehicles dedicated to Albion or to service Albion and have an origination in Albion, you would see a different number there.
Okay. I have a few follow-up questions.
Yeah.
Um, so with regard to, um, the, like, the user experience and, like, say they're using the app or calling, what would the timeline be to know whether you actually do have a ride?
So you can book 14 days in advance.
Okay.
Um, again, that is all, uh, that's current system policy. So the board would be able to, um, develop whatever booking policy they wanted. Um, right now, you can book 14 days in advance or you could book as little as 30 minutes in advance. So you will, you would be notified at the time that you either called to make the reservation or used the app, you would be notified if you were matched or not.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
And I think the, uh, the ideal with, uh, with, we're able to ramp up. Right now, we have two vans and this is proposing 22 van.
Correct.
I believe.
Yep.
Uh, so as, as this would ramp up, if authority was created and a millage was passed, it would ramp up to where you could call and get a ride. You know, it might start out as it's a better idea to schedule the day before or something, but over time, I think it would be more remarkable.
And then I just have one more question. So with regard to the tenants for the, the long-term plan, I'm curious if, um, you're gathering any data with regard to the users and really reaching the most vulnerable populations and, and what those barriers might be to make sure that they have access? Well, I, not what they might be, but how, how that's taking into account.
Yeah.
So for people in Albion.
Yeah. And we work more with, um, Community Action Agency, who is providing, um, specifically senior transportation in those with disabilities to get some of the data on the front end. Um, it's been a while since we've checked in on that data, frankly. Um, so it's a good question. But again, that's, we're in this sort of waiting period without an authority, we can't make specific decisions. But I agree, it's something that needs done.
So just to confirm, do you, do you gather any data on who's using?
We do. Um, so in the app currently, there is not, uh, that data gathered, it's gathered through a voluntary survey. So we don't have a full picture of all 2,000-plus users and some of that is, um, a, a matter of personal identifiable information within the app store. However, through the survey, we had roughly 157 responses to the survey where we were able to get some of that information, including socioeconomic information, which wouldn't have been gathered through the profile page in an app. Um, however, our tele-transit service, which is the demand response service within the city of Battle Creek, we gather all of that information. So as we look at kind of the next evolution of BC Go, um, and evolving that platform to something similar to that we're already using in Battle Creek, we would be able to gather that information. And we coordinate services already with Community Inclusive Recreation, Marion Verge Adult Day Center, Community Action Agency. So we do have some of that data, not on a county level, but within the city of Battle Creek. As we grew, we would be able to continue collecting that data.
Awesome. Thank you. And thank you for that being one of your roles.
Yeah.
Any other questions for our presenters? No? Well, thank you both for being here, for giving the information to us. I know, you know, this has been, like you said, years in the works and we're finally getting to a point where we can seriously discuss about what can we do to actually get it implemented. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Helen Guza, who is our director of our Calhoun County Senior Services.
Hi, it's great to be here. I, um, just wanted to give a annual report of how we use your senior millage tax dollars to help seniors in the county. Want to recognize Tom Hunstorf back here, who is, um, a Senior Millage Allocation Committee member. He helps decide how we're going to spend your dollars. And then Rebecca DeFinta is our administrative assistant and she lives here in Albion. She's been with us for about a year and been a great addition to our team. So, um, I passed out our annual report and our brochure. So we, in Calhoun County, we just have a small staff, we have three of us in the staff and we, um, we don't have a commission on aging like some counties do because we decided way back when senior millage was formulated in, um, 1996 and the first dollars became available in 1999, that we were going to contract out. So what we do with our funds is we provide very little service to the county directly. We contract with eight nonprofit organizations that fund our nine, our, um, our 22 programs. So this is what is our brochure, lists each of our programs. And, um, they were talking about Community Action Senior Transportation. They have nine vans that do provide countywide transportation currently, um, and they've been very affected by the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic in 2019, they gave 30,000 rides to 600 seniors and they spent a half a million dollars. So last year, you look at our annual report, inside our annual report is this is how we spend our contractual dollars in senior transportation. Um, I know that they did 13,000 rides to 476 seniors and they only spent 284,000 dollars because seniors stayed home and stayed safe. So they're rebuilding and part of it is they also lost drivers, kind of in the labor shortage. And then with, the drivers are usually retired men and women who do it as a part-time job and they stepped back during the pandemic. So they were paying $11 to $14 an hour and, um, senior millage, um, in January, in, or maybe it was probably December, we increased their reimbursement rate. So now they're charging, or they're paying 14 to 17 dollars. So established drivers are getting 17 dollars an hour and new drivers are getting 14 dollars an hour. So, um, senior transportation is one of our non-income tested programs. So the first programs are ones that anybody can get regardless of their income. And then the ones with stars are, are, um, our income-tested programs. And on the back is our housing-related programs. So, um, senior transportation, before the pandemic, we were going to equalize the fares. So, um, Battle Creek Transit for seniors and people with disabilities, they charge $2 a ride. They have a, um, a proposal to increase that to three and senior transportation was getting ready to impose, um, a fare. Right now, it's free and we were going to impose a fare to equalize the rate so people wouldn't have a disincentive to take Battle Creek Transit, especially in Battle Creek, but they would, it would open up more rides for the county. So Battle Creek or, um, Community Action actually provides rides Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they prioritize medical and grocery shopping over social. So I'll do my presentation here. The Senior Millage Allocation Committee, there's 13 members chaired by Commissioner Gary Tompkins. And, um, we're rebuilding our seniors served. So 570, 5,732 seniors, we were helped in one of our different programs in 2021. That was a little bit higher by a few hundred than 2020, but it was a lot less than the 600, 6,568 in, um, 2019. So we're trying to rebuild that. So we increased our income limits. Our income limits were 200% of poverty and now they're 250% of poverty. And on our brochure, on the back, lists what that is for a one- and two-person household. So what you have here on the screen is actually our, um, our map of what we've served. And it's interesting that the most served of any area in Calhoun County is Albion Township. So of the, it says, um, 350 adults over age 60, 248 of them use So of the, it says, 350 adults over age 60, 248 of them use one of our services. And one of our services is actually the Fork Senior Center. We give them $50,000 a year to help pay their operating costs. And so one of the reasons why Sheraton, Albion, and Albion Township are served so well by our programs is because of the Fork Senior Center, a vibrant senior center that you have here in the county building. So, but when you look at all of our programs, the Minor Home Repair Program, they're all serving Albion equitably. So I think that's a point of pride for me. And then if you want to advance to the next page? So on our demographics, we're about 45% male, 55% female, and we're over-serving females, and we're hoping to, we're increasing our restaurant dining program, and we're hoping that'll increase the number of meals served. Income is evenly distributed, and then I'm proud that the county is about 11% African-American. The city of Battle Creek is about 19% African-American, but we're serving, 18% of the people we serve are African-Americans, so we're serving, we're not underserving minorities, which I'm really proud to say. So we can go to the next slide. So the next one, the other way. So there's three types of funding that Senior Millage has, and we have a mini-grant program, and that's on the back here. The back has our centenarians and then has our mini-grants. And you look at this, Albion Community Gardens gets $5,000 a year for garden aid. Albion Healthcare Alliance gets $3,000 a year to help with the commodity distribution at Peabody Place and George Mather Homes. The Vome Theater did a matinee series for seniors through the Senior Millage Mini-grant program. The city of Albion got a grant this, last year and the year before, to help build the pavilion at Highland Park. We do $5,000 to the city of Marshall to be part of the partnership that funds the Albion-Marshall Connector. And then we also do the Walk the Beat, the concert series at the farmer's market. It's co-sponsored by Senior Millage by the $5,000. So we have this mini-grant program. We spend $65,000. It seeds smaller programs that we can make an impact. And then most of our, the tax dollars that we raise are spent in our contractual program, and that's reported on how they spend. These are the, our contractual spending is all of the programs that are here, and those are the numbers that we've served. And then we do these one-time grants. So the Albion Senior Housing, which is the development of Marbury Housing, hopefully they'll make an announcement, exciting announcement soon. That was a $150,000 grant we made two years ago. And then we also made a grant to the Albion Community Gardens to double their size. We also bought grant pads for the PACE program, and that's part of the expansion here in Albion. So great stuff that we're doing. You want to go forward, please? So the mini-grants I went through, the next one? And just our highlights, this is our staff. We do the Joanne Conkall Award, so we're just getting ready to issue the requests for nominations to the Joanne Conkall Award. Joanne Conkall wrote the grant to build Marion Birch, and then she ran Marion Birch, and then she ran the medical care facility, and then she was part of the founding of the Fork Senior Center, and she was a treasured member of the Senior Millage Allocation Committee. And so when she started to fail and had to resign, we created the Joanne Conkall Award. So we've done it, this is our fifth year that we've awarded that, and we're seeking nominations of leaders that have made both a volunteer and a professional commitment to aging services. So the next slide? So we have the senior ambassadors. That is an effort to get word of mouth. So we've got volunteers that come once a month to the county building, and they get trained in all of our programs, and then they go out there and they talk to their neighbors and church members to be our eyes and the ears and spread the word, because people don't know about Senior Millage services until they need them.
Right.
And then so we're trying to get more people to know about them. So we can't be everywhere, but our senior ambassadors are more places than we are in the community. So we're excited. That was actually one of Tom's pet projects that he pushed forward, and it's been very successful. Got great diversity all around the county of people participating. So the next slide? And then the thing we're most proud of in 2021 is our centenarian project. The butterflies are ones that have passed away, but these are 24 centenarians who lived in Calhoun County most of their lives for over 100 years, and 100 years are over. And so your own Robert Holt is up there, and Ernie Wackel from, he's a farmer in Tecancha, and just really wonderful stories. Our cover girl, we were actually there when she turned 100, and the staff had a birthday cake for her. So really fun way for us to highlight the history of Calhoun County through recognizing our centenarians. We used to have a birthday party at Schuler's. We haven't had that the last three years because of the pandemic, but it's been a great project that. So if you have anyone in your family or you know that's turning 99 or over, please let us know so we can recognize them. We're going to do something different this year. We haven't, we're still working those plans out, but we're going to continue to recognize our centenarians at Calhoun County. So we are all about celebrating aging. Senior Millage renewed on the ballot in 2020 with 82% of Calhoun County residents voting yes. So I think that's a real vote of confidence that we're transparent, we're trusted, and we're doing good services. So I really see us as a safety net. If a furnace goes out or a water heater of someone who owns their own home and who is 60 years and over, Community Action's Minor Home Repair Program can go help them, which is really a great thing. So our programs are flexible. Our office, we do Medicaid and Medicare counseling, and we do a lot of information and referrals. So you know a senior in need, have them call our office, and we'll help them solve their problem. Thanks for your time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any other questions? Councilman Lenou?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder, and thank you, Helen. This was great. I, could we have access to the slides too?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, that was really helpful information.
Okay, terrific.
Appreciate that.
Yep, I have brochures. I will pass them out. If you know someplace that they should be, we will drop them off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no public hearing this evening. Public comment. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and make a comment in regards to one of our agenda items? You have three minutes if you would like to state your name and address.
Jay Loomis, 408 West Ash Street. The one I would like to speak on is the presentation you just had on the countywide transit system. Last year after I retired, I took Wednesdays and I went into Battle Creek to hit their farmer's market. They have an amazing one, slightly better than Albion's, which is also on Wednesday. I took Amtrak in, which is fairly dependable, runs about $10 in if you order the tickets, a week out, $20 in if you order them a day before. Battle Creek Transit, as he said, is $15 to get back. There is nothing coming west unless you want to catch Greyhound at 10:30 at night, or if you want to try to catch Amtrak at about 5:30 as it comes out of Chicago, which puts you back here about 6:00, 6:15. There is no taxi service in Battle Creek whatsoever. I don't believe there's one in Albion, unless you guys approved one. I didn't catch that. Marshall has a taxi service. They focus completely on party centers. If you have drunks that want to get home, they'll pick you up for like $25. They won't come into Albion, and they won't go into Battle Creek. They use mostly hotels. Lyft, Lyft exists. It runs $36 from Battle Creek to Albion. I've had to do that. The reason why I have to do that is they only do have, like they said, the two vans. If they get 22, they'll do much better, I hope. If you are trying to schedule a van, which I think was your question, more than, I usually scheduled on the weekend to go on Wednesday, you cannot get a van after 11:30. Can't do it. You can take Amtrak in, you can walk to the farmer's market, and you can get a van back if you hustle. I would encourage you to support the countywide transit system. I used to argue with the people that I worked with, I still got a couple minutes. I used to argue with the people I worked with. They said public transportation was out, and I would always counter with, the last new cars I looked at cost more than both houses I've bought combined. I've looked at new cars here, or used cars here lately, and you're only dropping maybe five grand off the cost to get a decent used car. I don't see income going up, and I see prices going up. I think public transportation will do more to help the people of Albion. I have heard the argument that it takes customers out of Albion into Battle Creek. Your landlords downtown seem to be doing a fairly good job of bringing in interesting and different shops, which I think they're doing, as I said, I think they're doing a good job. If they continue that, that's a two-way street. You could be bringing people in to Albion to go to the shops if you had transportation going both directions. I guess the last thing I was going to say, what was his name? There's a comedian. Trevor Noah said, there's an ancient saying about give a guy a fish and you feed him for today. Teach him how to fish and you feed him for a lifetime. The problem is where the hell does he get a fishing pole, and how does he get to the river? It's that simple. And I would think if you would push on, if you would back or support countywide transit system, you'd be able to get them to the river or to their job if it was done effectively.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, have a good one.
Anybody else in the gallery that would like to make a public statement about the agenda? Do you have anybody else?
Good evening, hello?
Laurie Sharers.
Okay, Garrett Brown, 1016 South Superior Street, Albion, Michigan. Just two comments, one primarily on the council rule revisions. So I know that if you all change the rules, there have to be kind of two votes, two different meetings to change it. So I, what I take from the two proposed changes are probably the council's desire to make sure that there's not like a violation where a public person, their comments are read, like that happened before. So I think that's, there's a desire to correct that, and then also to kind of tamp down on the kind of leakiness or maybe elected officials using their knowledge to advance their particular personal agenda or benefit, right? The concerns that I have, I'll go in reverse order, regarding the public comment thing. So I think if we allow people, if the council allows people to put their comments in the packet, it kind of disadvantages other people who might not know about the meeting and show up and watch it. So what you're basically doing is you're allowing people to use the city's publication or notice purposes, right, to distribute a message, right, in the packet. So I think the way it was originally written was it's submitted to the clerk, the city has a copy of it as a public record, the council people are notified, but then to actually put it in the public facing packet, basically if you do that, really someone can have a stream of, you know, commentary. I could write a commentary on the packet every week. So I think before you approve that, you might want to reconsider how it was originally set up, that's first thing. And then the second thing is just, I would make sure the council recognizes if they are, if they're tying their hands about speaking about council business, you're also, you'd also maybe want to do that for the administrative staff as well, because what you're saying is if you all become aware of something, you can't speak to it with your constituents to a council meeting, but that doesn't mean the manager, assistant manager, or any other department head or city staff could not do that. So if you are going to make it more strenuous on yourself, it means the board and staff as well. So thank you for your service. And the other thing, just the last thing, just about the ORPA districts, ORPA districts, I haven't had a chance to go through that, but I just want to make sure, as with most things with economic development city, just making sure that we're not making it harder for people to participate in the rising tide, and also not targeting public resources to a narrow sliver of developers. So thank you all so much. Bye-bye.
In our packets, we have the items to approve under the consent calendar. Those items are the April 4th regular session minutes, the April 4th study session minutes, and the wastewater purification expenditure. Do I have a motion to approve? So support. Any questions? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Lenou.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. I have a motion to approve the resolution for the ballot language for our new tax levy for the reconstruction of the Albion streets. Some will support. Mayor Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So city council, as you may be aware, we've started holding town hall meetings to discuss how we are going to maintain and improve the roads here in our city. Earlier in this year, and I believe some of late last year, we started this discussion here with city council, and you all tasked city administration to come up with a small amount, a good amount, and then shoot for the moon. So we provided you with a potential increase in three mils, six mils, and nine mils. You all tasked us with pursuing the six mil increase, coming up with a draft plan on what that budget, the type of, the level of service or projects we would be able to accomplish with that additional funding to repair our roads. So we have been working with Whiteman and Associates. They've developed a draft project plan that will support projects based off the budget of additional six mils in road funding that brings in roughly a little over $500,000 each year to work with. So that is what we have been presenting to our community on, just different projects that would be supported by this new budget. This is just, it's just a draft plan, so nothing is finalized. It's just showing what the different types of projects that could be accomplished by having this additional road funding. So we had our first town hall meeting last Monday. I would, I think it was a very successful, a well-intended event. Thank you all for coming out and supporting that town hall. We are working to get our next town hall scheduled. We are having multiple town halls until, if this ballot language is approved tonight, it will go on the primary election ballot, which is in August. So with that, city attorney has prepared ballot language that will take before our voters to either approve a millage levy of six mils. It has to go before our voters, because the city, we are only allowed to levy so many tax bills to our community, and we are at that max capacity. I believe per charter, it's 12 mils, and we're a little bit below 11 right now currently, so that's why it's going before the voters. For this to be approved, it can't just be simply we get a few more yeses. We have to have a three-fifths majority of our voters to approve this. So it is going to require a good level of support from our residents to get this put in place. But it's just now before, come before you for official approval to move forward with getting this language submitted to the county so that it can be on the ballot here in August. I don't know if I can open it up to any questions.
Mayor for Tim Jackson?
Yes, what I was concerned about was the years. So we know when we did that millage, when you did that millage, that town hall meeting, in there it talked about from 2023 to 2028. And then in here, it says from 2023 to 2025.
Yep.
Can you explain that? I see the years and everything, but if we're talking to them about till 28, now we're saying until 25?
Yep, that's a very surprising. So since we are at our max amount that we can levy, as I said, it requires a three-fifths majority of approval, and then we can only assess that levy for three years. So that's why it would be going to effect from 2023 until 2025. However, Whiteman, they've developed a plan that would cover six years. So if it is approved, we will have the first three years, and then you'd obviously have to go back before voters for their reapproval that we would then be able to update our plan or still continue to move forward with what the different projects that have been identified. And I say that, the project plan that has come up, that, you have to keep in mind, that's going to be a working document. So different projects that have been identified, they may shift in level of priority just based off of different state and federal grant funding that becomes available. Obviously, we have to have some funding internally to provide, most grants require a match from the local municipality. Just those can, those matches can vary in different percentages, so we have to have something that we can leverage to take advantage of those grant dollars. So per our charter, we're only able to levy this additional tax for three years, so then it would have to go back before our voters for renewal.
Yes, Councilman Lawler?
Okay, so when we had our town hall meeting, I think it was very productive. Thank you for hosting that with many more to come. From my constituents, what I'm hearing is that they support the... what I'm hearing is, um, that they support the, they support the ballot language to be, for it to be on the ballot, but, um, as far as supporting the floor plan, um, did I hear you say that, um, well, is this, is, is this the only floor plan that we have, or do we have other floor plans as to how we're gonna do it? Or the one that you presented at the town hall meeting, is that the only one that you have?
No, so that is just a draft plan. So, um, Whitman, the engineers with Whitman and Associates, based off the budget that will come from this additional tax funding, which is $566,520, they then just, um, identified different projects that would occur throughout the city. Um, so that's not finalized. Um, the first town hall, great, we got great feedback from our residents, so we are keeping that in mind as we move forward, and we will make adjustments to, um, that project plan, but that's not finalized. I already know a lot of the feedback was, well, my road's not included. This, we have to start somewhere. And this, um, unfortunately, this will only be able to tackle roughly about 10% of our roads. So it's just a start. But I think it's very important to provide, to be able to provide a plan. I don't think the city has had one ever. We've just say, approve this millage and we'll, we'll repair your roads. But this is something that our constituents can hold us accountable for and show them how we are properly utilizing their tax dollars. So it is just a working document, um, I, just a draft document right now, just to kind of show you what level of projects could be accomplished, um, based off the budget.
Okay, thank you so much.
So how would it be determined at the end of what it's going to be?
In that, in that plan?
Yeah.
So it's all based off of our, the Pacer rating scale. So it's going to be a combination of preventative maintenance work, um, on some of our roads, but then also full reconstruction. Um, so we are working with, because they aren't looking at certain, they're looking at the Pacer rating. Um, obviously, we'll want to make sure, um, any road that is rated, I think three and below requires full reconstruction. That's the most expensive, um, project. Based off the feedback that we have from our town hall meeting, they're coming up with another plan that will show, okay, if we only have full reconstruction project, this is how much it's going to cost us. Um, so they will, if we have a budget or, um, some funding that is supported or approved by our voters, that's when we will work with the engineers to kind of finalize a project plan, come up with how are we going, okay, this is what we have to work with. Let's identify a level of project that will come before council. That is, will be tied into our transportation asset management plan, and that will be approved by, by this board. But then, as I stated, that is, it's going to be a working document, so things could change based off of grant funding that could become available. So more streets that may not have been included in the plan, they could be added, um, because some grants are only specific to certain roads. Um, and then some, so it's gonna, it's always gonna change, it's constantly gonna change, just depending on what additional, um, resources are available to.
But 2023 is a definite for the Albion Street Bridge?
That is, yes, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, hosting the town hall. I wish I could have been there in person, but it was good to see so, so much engagement and hear the feedback that I, that I was able to hear. And then, um, I think that the biggest thing that I'm, I'm thinking about, I think I saw it in some of the county, um, reading that we have for this week, but the whole idea of an educational campaign is gonna be very critical for getting that three-fifths majority. Um, so I'm just looking forward to seeing how we can support that.
Thank you. And so based off of the feedback that we got from our first town hall, we're working to develop new materials to provide to, um, to, to our residents just based off of what they would like to see. Um, so we are constantly working to prepare more information to provide to our residents. Tentatively, we're looking to have our next, um, town hall, Thursday, May 5th, and then Thursday, um, May 19th. The one on May 5th will be held during the day, so we want to obviously provide an opportunity for our residents who may work the night shift or later in the day to come out and be, um, provided with this information. And then the session on the 19th will be another evening session starting at 6:00 PM. So we're trying to make sure that we reach as many residents as possible. Um, the daytime will be held here at City Hall, here in the council chambers. And then the evening one, I've reached out to Lutheran Church to see if we can utilize their facility, trying to take advantage of different facilities here in our community to hopefully get different, um, residents out, um, to learn about this important initiative.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Lawler?
Okay, thank you. Um, have you reached out to anyone, um, for, for precinct?
Not yet. I just started, so we just started with the Marshall Opportunity School, and then I'm trying to find a facility that's large enough to hold a good amount of people. The one that we had less money was very well attended, the room was full. So I'm trying to just find someplace that has a large enough space to accommodate a lot of residents.
And the day on May the 5th, that will start at what time?
11:00 AM.
Okay.
And that'll be here at City Hall.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one.
Go ahead.
I was taking somebody notes. Um, with regard to the language itself, I know the purpose and finding isn't, um, as critical of a legal component, but I just had a question. The last sentence, um, speaks to the Headley Amendment, and, um, the final part says the amount actually levied may be less as a result of required rollbacks. I'm wondering if we could just add like less than the projected amount, so it's clear what we're referring it would be less than. Um, when I read that, I kind of felt like I didn't understand what we were referring. It was less than.
You can add that to the, I mean, realistically, what you're voting on is everything that follow, that's under the block paragraph, under resolved. I mean, the purpose and finding is just informational for council. I mean, you're not, you're not approving any of that. I, I, but don't get me wrong, if you want to change that, you certainly can. Um, but what you're approving is the language where it says shall and ends with by law.
Okay. So, yes, that's what will be on the actual ballot.
It's underneath resolved.
Correct. That's all you're approving tonight.
Okay. Ballot proposal shall, okay. Any other questions or comments before we take a due vote? City Clerk Domingo?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
Yes. They have a motion to approve, um, the obsolete property rehabilitation or Oprah district procedures. Some vote.
Support.
City Manager Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the Albion City Council, um, created the obsolete property rehabilitation district, or, um, also known as the Oprah District. Um, at the February 3rd, 2020 regular city council meeting, um, that district falls within the downtown area, so it mirrors our downtown district. Um, so the purpose of the Oprah District is to encourage commercial rehabilitation in our downtown. As you are aware, we are having a lot of develop, redevelopment occurring in the downtown area. Um, Oprah is another, um, incentive that these developers can use to waive, um, taxes that have to be paid over so, so many years. I believe the, uh, max amount that they can apply for is 12 years. So now that we have a formal Oprah District in place, we know that more redevelopment will continue to happen in the downtown area. Um, city administration, we are recommending to council that we get a formal policy, an Oprah policy in place. So within that policy, um, we have just, um, detailed just the purpose of it, as well as, um, just different, um, I just lost my turn. Just different criteria that a developer must have when applying for, um, an Oprah through the city. Um, we don't, we're just trying to make sure that it is equitable and fair for all developers. Um, and we have also provided a different option, so different requirements. So just depending on the level of investment or development, the level of project costs, um, so that not everyone is applying for a 12-year Oprah, we have, um, provided different, um, project costs that will determine how many, uh, the abatement lengths. So for example, if you're looking at $75,000 worth of investment, we're, um, looking at a three-years abatement. So you would apply for a three-year Oprah. Um, the 12, 12-year Oprah would be for an investment worth over half a million or more. So we're just looking to, obviously still want, we want to provide this incentive to our developers, but we, we also need to make sure that the city is reaping a benefit. Yes, we will, once the develop, the project comes to life, but until these Oprahs come to length, we're not capturing any of, um, possible tax, taxes that these new properties and projects could bring to the city. So this is just a way that, making sure that the developers also receiving an incentive, but also the, the city as well. Um, also included, we have proposed a $50 filing, filing fee. So any developer who is applying for an Oprah, they have to submit an application and request this from council. So we're looking at a $50 filing fee, and, um, included in there is an amendment to the fee schedule, which incorporates that $50 fee. So we are recommending approval for both the formal Oprah policy as well as the amendment to the fee schedule to include that, to include that new.
Any questions or comments for our city manager?
I think they go to.
Sorry, Mayor Potem Jackson?
They did go to Colin, because I think she answered it, but I should make sure. So I see she answered my question down at the bottom of page one of this, um, of this, uh, rehabilitation district, um, planning. Now, in 3.12, um, this one, your quick lawyer explanation in that area right there.
Are you talking about 3.1 sub 2?
Correct.
So basically, what it's saying is, um, the, whatever they're going to put, whatever is going to be the end result of the development, has to basically be reasonably likely to increase commercial activity at that location, increase employment, and minimize loss of employment, and basically overall revitalize that particular area.
Okay, that's what I took. I'm making sure. And then on 3, 3.2, so this is going to the, um, the Albion Planning Commission for review first, and then it comes to us?
Yeah, most developments go through Planning Commission already anyway, um, depending upon the nature of the project. I mean, they could require, you know, a variance or something like that, or they could require, um, um, well, there's any number of things that could require Planning Commission approval. So any kind of development is already gonna go through planning, so this is just in there, just to put it out there so everyone's aware.
Okay, so, um, 3, 3.3B, she answered that already. The city manager answered that. And, um, I do believe she, okay, so you just talked about the application on, that would be 3A, little bit, 33, 332A, that was answered. And the other thing, and then I had 3.5, she answered the filing. Okay, so, um, 3.4 underneath the certificates, that whole area right there. The city council on its own initiative? Page five?
Yep, I'm looking at page five, and you're talking about, under the paragraph where it starts, a certificate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what, what that paragraph is saying that, um, the, the, it says it's only gonna, the exemption's only gonna be approved after creation of a district, or the districts are already approved. Um, the certificate basically allowing a development to be exempt is gonna be done, uh, by resolution, so council will have to approve it formally by resolution. That'll be after the, after it comes, uh, through Planning Commission, has approval there. Um, and let's see here. You'll determine the length based on the schedule that's already, uh, that's set forth in the.
In the back.
I think it's on the next page, actually, on page six. And then, uh, basically, you can impose other conditions that you deem appropriate, depending upon, which will really depend on the nature of the project. I mean, I could foresee the council saying, um, you know, we want to see X, Y, and Z because of this specific project, and we were gonna make that contingent on approving the, the Oprah exemption. Um, so you have that option to add those.
Okay.
If it, if it applies.
Okay, that sounds good. Cause then the other question, um, she answered was on the back. When she talked about it being adjusted on the fourth, on the fourth line, you talked about the right to adjust the length of any tax exemption, and then you had the, um, scenario there, or the example. Okay.
And included is the, um, the resolution that was passed 2020, 2002 to formally adopt or create the Oprah District. That's included.
Okay, then I have one question. So our CD director, which is Ian, would be a part of, who's our zoning?
That is Director Arnold as well.
Is gonna be?
He handles all planning, building, and.
And the zoning as well.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, Councilwoman Lanu?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I, I was kind of curious, because I, I think that in terms of, um, approving things like this, you know, a policy, um, it's, it's just important to have as much information and, and education as possible, so that when people are concerned about tax abatements, we know how to explain that. So, um, I was, I was kind of curious, because I, I rarely see the word tax in here in terms of exemptions and abatements. Um, so I wasn't sure if there was like an, a strategy or intention to not including that. That was like my preliminary question. But then, under 3.1, um, number three, it says this will increase the tax base. And I, I do understand how development increases the overall tax base, but because we're offering an abatement on taxes, I'm curious if you can just help us understand sort of like that, that whole equation.
Yep, so obviously having new development added to the community that will increase the total property value and, um, tax base for the city. However, when you, uh, apply for an Oprah, we abate those taxes for so long, so right during that time, we're not capturing that increase or additional tax revenue. So, once the, they have the completion of their Oprah, however long they have been granted, once that's been completed, then the city will start to see an increase in overall taxes. So that's why, um, we felt that it's important to kind of provide different guidelines or criteria that different developments can apply for, so that we're not just granting the max amount that we can evade these taxes for, so that, um, different years, or depending on the size of the development, um, they will qualify for those. So that we are both, the developers getting the incentive by, um, foregoing taxes for a certain allotted period to be able to, um, uh, support their project or complete their project, but then the city also starts to receive a, a benefit well before 12 years, the maximum, um, level of abatement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have a list of these properties?
Um, right now, there's, we don't have, currently have an Oprah in place. This is we're just trying to prep ourselves, because we know that there will be more development coming, um, downtown. So once.
You actually have one, right?
The Leddington, is it the Leddington, Leddington Center, yes. Um, and that's been in place for how long? Tom, do you know? Is it near, I think it's.
I don't recall how long it was.
It opened in 2017.
Yeah, five, it's five.
I don't remember how many years it goes, five or seven years, just.
Okay. So outside of the Leddington Center, we don't currently have any, um, additional Oprahs yet, but so this is, we're just trying to prep ourselves for when we do have more applications come before us, we have a formal policy that we can.
This is good.
Take advantage of.
Councilwoman Lanu?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Just, um, a follow-up question to that. Um, that any property within the district is eligible.
Correct.
To apply.
Correct.
Yes, Council?
Just so council's aware, at least how the, how the current statute stands for the obsolete property rehabilitation act, they, they're allowing for exemptions until December 31 of 2026. And after that, unless the legislation changes, they won't, they don't allow the issuance of any new certificates. But all, all the, all the Oprah exemptions granted until December 31, 2026 are permitted.
A quick question.
Okay.
Um, so back to 3.4, if, I understand the, the incentive is to, um, bring new development to the downtown area with the, um, the way the district is laid out. Um, if, let's say, before 2026, we establish another district, would this allow that, or would we have to amend this?
I, I don't think you would amend the, the one, it's like you would, um, adopt a new.
Adopt a new.
Yep, so council has the right or authority to create a new Oprah District wherever, um, within the community. But right now, this is the only one that we have currently.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So basically, we're voting on two separate things in regards to this issue. Am I correct?
Yep, so it would be the approval of the Oprah policy. Yep, so it would be the approval of the Oprah policy as well as the amendment to the 2022 fee schedule.
So it's one vote, but it's two, two things to vote.
Two men. Are we clear on that, everyone?
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Motion to approve land purchase agreement of 307 East Cass Street. Some move.
Support.
City Manager Snyder.
Yes, excuse me, thank you, Mayor. So the city council, you guys approved Resolution 2022-13, a resolution to support our application to MISHDA for the MISHDA mod program for workforce housing. So the city's application, we will utilize 307 East Cass Street. Currently, the site is controlled by the Calhoun County Land Bank. And however, to be able to take advantage of that program, we have to be, we have to be, the property has to be under the city's authority. So the Calhoun County Land Bank authority, they have provided the city with a purchase agreement for the property. The purchase agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney and has received their approval. So in there, in the purchase agreement, the purchase price for the property is $1,358. The city, as well as the land bank, we have agreed to split all closing costs, 50/50, all closing costs, title work and fees, and if necessary, a fight title fees. But we're not sure what that will be until we get to the closing process. The buyer, we will pay the realtor fee of $200. So there's different estimated total costs for the purchase of this. It could, so it is, the estimated total cost is $3,251. So it's the acquisition, which is the $1,358, and then that's including the closing, the realtor, and the regular title. Or if we have the other type of, the regular title, it'll be $2,251. So you're looking at a $1,000 difference between, just depending on what type of title is required by that. But we won't know that until we get to that part of the process in closing on that property. I think this will be a good opportunity to utilize some of the city's ARBA dollars to leverage some of those funds to take advantage of another grant opportunity. So the next step to be able to move forward with the MISHDA mod program is we have to acquire this property. So we are bringing this purchase agreement before council for approval, so that we can move forward with this. As again, MISHDA, they're very happy that the city has continued to take advantage of this, and they're very excited to see us complete this project.
Any questions in regards to the contract? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Lanu.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the revisions to council rules of procedures.
You actually, this is actually just discussion. I know it says discussion approval, but because the rules say that it's not voted on in its first process, it's just discussion tonight.
So, Councilwoman Lanu.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. This, we discussed this during the previous meeting study session. There have been a few things that have changed slightly, but this is mainly just what we already discussed. I do have one question for you, Attorney Harkness, with regard to the public comment that we received about the city staff. Do the rules of procedure pertain to city staff?
Not, you know, to the extent that we have, we've defined the roles and responsibilities of the staff as defined by the charter, but realistically, your rules of procedure govern how you handle your meetings and information that you have at your meetings. Realistically, the city staff doesn't, I mean, unless they're invited by you, don't participate in those meetings. So I don't know that you can, you know, bind the city staff with the council rules of procedure. I mean, that's why they're called the council rules of procedure.
That is my understanding. Thank you. And then with regard to the other, the other miscellaneous under rule number two for the roles, could you share that with the council? Oh, Councilmember Lawler.
Oh, it's your, I'll wait till you get done.
Okay.
Two.
2F miscellaneous one was added, and then there was also an additional item that we wanted to discuss tonight.
Yeah, so Councilwoman Lanu contacted me about adding some additional language to address a potential other issue. So under Rule 2F, right now, you have a red line in front of you that talks about if a council member obtains information on matters of city business in their capacity as a council member, the information is, should not be disseminated to any non-city official, third party, prior to that information being publicly disclosed in a council packet, a council meeting, or public hearing, or otherwise permitted or required by law. The conversation that I had with Councilwoman Lanu, there was a concern about when city resources are used kind of in a similar manner. And so what I came up with for suggested language following my discussion with Councilwoman Lanu was the following, which would be an added two under miscellaneous. It would be if a city council member utilizes city resources in furtherance of a city, and I'll send this to you, Jill. In furtherance of any city project or initiative, or proposed project or initiative, the existence of said project or initiative shall be disclosed to the city council prior to any information relating to said project or initiative being disseminated to any non-city affiliated third party, unless otherwise permitted or required by law. So those are the two changes that we put in under miscellaneous, that new section miscellaneous F. And then the other changes that we had discussed at council had to do with the written comments that are contained.
Rule number nine.
Yes, Rule number nine, G. And those are, and there were no additional changes to those.
I did want to also respond to the public comment that we received. And I want to make sure I'm understanding. So I think that the concern was that the need for, if someone wants to say a public comment and actually have it disseminated in the form of the city's resources under the public packet, then they should just come in and say that versus changing that. So I think that I, what we currently had would not require a change to the first part of Item G, but only the addition of the written comments received and the last two sentences. Does that make sense? So the council shall accept written comments and copies of any submitted materials, and those will be distributed to all council members, period. And then the format for individuals submitting them to the city council would be through the city clerk's office for distribution. So basically keeping those two sentences as is versus changing them. I also would say that individuals and groups are able to submit instead of encouraged, but that's a very minor detail as well.
Doesn't that understand that what that's for?
You have to look underneath your rule.
So we're on item, Rule number nine, Item G, written communication. And.
First it says public participation.
Yep, Rule nine, public participation, Item G, written communication. For the first three sentences, excuse me, two sentences, not making those changes and keeping it as is, is what I'm saying.
Because I see it has a line through "will be", and then underline under "which will".
So taking that, so you were just.
Leaving it as is.
The council shall accept written comments and copies of any submitted materials will be distributed to all council members. Individuals or groups are encouraged to submit written comments to the city council via mail, email, or deliver to the city clerk's office for distribution.
Yes.
She wants to keep. So you're just removing the part "it will not be included in the council packet"?
Correct.
So anything that's underlined is what you want to submit, I mean, take out?
For the first two sentences.
The first two sentences.
And again, this will come back before the council to actually be approved. So this is just the discussion.
Right, yeah, so you'll do an actual vote to approve the modifications at your first meeting in May.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Okay, so just to kind of comment on Councilmember Lanu's first question to the city attorney. I can remember that a time where jobs were not being posted, but council made a decision to post all jobs. So you said we don't have a right to, can you explain that a little bit to us? How that went and how we were able to do that? To refer to what the city administration would do? And like, how did we, how we were able to do that?
Well, so here's what you have to keep in mind. The council, the only two individuals in the council that, or, excuse me, it's been a long Monday. The only two employees in the city that answer to the council are myself and the manager. So the council can't put something in place in its council rules saying, here's what all the administration is going to do. You can say, you can have that policy as it relates to the city attorney or as it relates to the city manager, but you can't say, here's what we're deciding that the administration collectively is going to do, because that's a decision for the city manager to make as to what her subordinate staff can and can't do. So the, when you did that policy as it relates to posting jobs, that was something that you directed the city manager to do as, you know, here's what we're going to do. But, you know, we can't put in the council rules, hey, this is what all the city staff is and is not allowed to do. That's the difference there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure, because that's, I mean, that's something that falls under the purview of the manager's office.
Yeah, I just needed to make it clear, that's all.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
I also think, that is a great question, and I think what I took from, away from you originally, Attorney Harkness, was that this document is specific to the city council rules of procedure. And with regard to concern about any conduct or things like that, that could happen through a resolution or some other form, but it wouldn't go through the rules of procedure for the city council.
Yeah, if there's, the short answer is yeah. I mean, the council rules of procedure are for the council. And there are some things in there that talk, like I said, that talk about specific roles of officers and whatever. But when we're talking about what anyone other than the manager and myself can do, that's where the council has to be careful, because you don't want to cross over that role from policymakers to give, you know, kind of giving direction to the subordinate staff, because that's the city manager's job.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Okay, so just so I'm clear, there's a consensus that the council wants to adopt the modifications discussed tonight and the modifications discussed by Councilwoman Lanu?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on that? Can we elaborate? What does so, city, our elected officials utilizing city resources? Can, do you have anything specific in mind or?
Yes, specifically like staff time. So like the example that this is stemming from was the project, actually today, the groundbreaking, that project was utilizing staff time, but we weren't made known about it before it was made known to the public. And that like channel of communication, it continues to erode the trust in our community when there's things happening with the city that the council isn't made aware of. And then it's like we're told about things after the public's made aware of it. So the resources is specific to the city staff time.
I guess I'm a little confused on that, because the groundbreaking, you all received the invitation.
No, I'm saying what led up to that, when that was released. It wasn't today, that was just what reminded me of it, was that happening.
But then I also was approached by this donor as well to discuss this, so that's how city staff was.
So the purpose of this rule wouldn't be a major change? It would just be the council being made aware? This is a fundamental part of the mayor's role, is making sure the council is aware of matters happening in the community, but particularly when it relates to the city's resources being used for projects that are impacting all of us.
And I guess I'm envisioning like things that we work with, with the EDC. There are meetings that are held with potential businesses that are looking to come in here but want to remain anonymous and don't want anything out there yet. So.
So I'm really just referring to the public being made aware through press releases and a number of things, but the council isn't made aware of that. So when people come to us wanting to understand something that they've read in the paper, but we haven't really been privy to information. At that point, the whole public is aware, so it's not really asking for much else than.
Basically just making you all informed first before anything goes public.
Exactly.
Are we good with that, and we ready to move on?
Did we answer Colin's question? Did we answer your question, Colin?
I think you did. So what I'll do is I'll integrate the changes that we discussed tonight and the, both the addition that Councilwoman Lanu and I discussed and the putting the Section 9G, the first two sentences back the way that they originally were. And then this will come back to council. And I'll keep it in a red line format, so you can see the changes that you'll actually be voting on. But you'll vote on it at your next regular meeting, your first meeting in May. Yeah.
I need to have a motion to approve the waiver of park reservation fees. Some move.
Support.
Councilwoman Lee, it's yours.
Yeah, okay. I asked for that because the committee I work with, okay, I work with the Juneteenth Committee, and we were talking about, that's a national holiday now, and that's something that's necessary for our city to celebrate. And it's national, for our nation, everyone to celebrate is the Juneteenth. And then when it comes to the health and safety expo, they give away a lot of things that are valuable to the city, like people who have diabetes. They give away free test monitors and high blood pressure tests and things like that. And I think they do enough for the city to where it should not have to, they should not have to pay for the space that they use to do it. And Big Read is another one, excellent program that gives away books for people to read. They involve children in different entities of it to where the children read and report back and do different things. And I think that these three things are just really, really important enough to where they should not have to pay for the space they use to do it. And talking to the directors of each one, they would very much appreciate their not having. Therefore, it gives them more money to use to get out things to the public.
Councilwoman Lawler.
I just wanted to say that we have to really be careful when we're doing this, because others will expect the same treatment. So we just, I'm just saying we have to just be careful.
I agree, because I think, you know, if any.
I agree, because I think, you know, if anybody who wants to organize something like this, they could come to any one of us and give any type of justification as to why they should have that fee waived. So, you know, just to echo Councilwoman Lollar, that this could be a slippery slope that we're about to embark on by waiving fees for entities.
If I can just add, obviously it's up to the discretion of council, you guys are the only ones who can waive fees that have been set by the fee schedule, but I would just echo both what Councilwoman Lollar as well as Mayor Snyder said, we are going to start doing this, I think it would be best if we form or create a formal policy or requirements that people need to meet, because I think we are opening the door. And right now, you don't have justification, if, let's say, we have a resident who approaches us and they may be struggling, but they want to take, utilize one of our facilities and they ask that we forego or waive the fee to do that, how are we going to say yes to one person and then no to another? So I just think moving forward, if this is something that we're going to do, I'd be happy to draft a formal policy or something that we can have in place that kind of identifies type, different criteria that someone needs to meet in order to have their fee waived. And I just wanted to reiterate, we have a fee schedule to support the cost for our workers to go out and tend to these different facilities, as well as the cost to repair, maintain, and upkeep our pavilions and other facilities throughout our community. So we just have to be mindful of that, if we start just foregoing every fee, we're, it's starting to become a cost to the city.
Can you put something in place?
What's that?
Can you put something in place?
Yeah, I'll have to work on something.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer, I agree with everything that's been said, because, you know, from a legal standpoint, you, if you start denying or approving fee waivers arbitrarily without some kind of specific objective criteria, you're going to eventually run into some group or individual getting denied that is litigious, and you're going to end up with a lawsuit over a very small fee, but sometimes it happens.
Councilwoman Lollar?
Are we voting on this as a whole or individual for today?
It was as a whole, since it was one item.
Okay. And are we able to get something, put a policy put in place as soon as you can?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk coming up?
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lollar?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder?
No. Do I have, nope, just a discussion on our citywide patch schedule. Director Miller?
Evening. So before you is the patch plan that the DPW is using this year. Here's the plan that we had last year. The only difference is, we kind of included on there when we're going to have hot patch. Good news is, our asphalt plan opened last week, so we have started getting hot patch. Great thing. So Kevin O'Brien, the street superintendent, he can't be here, he's in Montana with his mother, but he has kind of put this together. They're going to start on the trunk line, the state routes, then they're going to go down the major roads that are traveled the most, just kind of refresh those from the winter damage, and then they're going to go back to the hot patch plan that we started working on last year. So last year, if you can remember, we started on section two, yep, section two, so this year, we're going to do section three, which is the southwest. From there, we're going to patch everything we can and move on to the other sections in the rotation.
Yes, Councilwoman Lollar?
Yes, at the meeting, the town hall meeting that we had, there was a couple comments, well, there was a comment about the material that we're using to patch up. Have you took in any thought about like looking into something new or anything like that?
Yeah, so we were actually brought up at that meeting was, throughout all of winter, we had to use cold patch, because hot patch isn't available, and cold patch is not durable in any way. So now that the asphalt plan is opened up and we're able to get hot patch, it's a much more durable material that lasts much longer in the hole, and that's what we're using from last week forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
So now you're going to do three, four, two, one, or how is that going?
Yeah, I think we're going to go to three, four, one, two.
Three, four, one?
Because we started in two.
With hot patch?
Last year. Yep, we started in two last year.
So they go in?
We didn't get everything.
What did you, what in two did you do with hot patch last year?
I don't know the specifics, but I can get with Kevin.
Could you get them, I'd like to see them.
Mayor Tim Jackson?
Yes, I did have, one of the residents asked a question, they said, can you give them like a schedule? They like to know like a schedule, as you already have done, but like what has been repaired, when were they repaired last?
We do our best.
That's good. So that was asked at one of the, present at one of my present meetings, she said, could you do that for us?
And I think it's important to know, it's going to take some time to have this done. Like I said, we met with all of the employees from the DPW, and right now, our streets department, they have five workers. That includes our mechanic, that includes our heavy operators, so not, we're limited by staff, so we have five men or workers to handle patching the entire, the entire community. So it's going to take some time, it's going to, we have, there's not a shortage of needs on potholes, so it is going to take time, and if, we can just share with our residents and just reiterate that, that they are busy working, but then with having only five guys, and if we have a water main break or something else comes up, they have to stop what they're doing, and they are pulled to go attend to those projects as well. So I know they're working hard to address these issues, and we just have to keep that in mind, that we are, we have five individuals who are handling the entire city.
Yes, Councilwoman.
For the last three years, I've been talking about, like when you come off Eaton Street onto Chestnut Street, around, going south on Chestnut Street, going south, going west on Chestnut Street, people are coming around that corner, running all the way to the other side of the street to go back in, because right there is a great big patch where there was a hole that was 13 inches deep. And yeah, they've been coming by putting stuff in and it pops right back out. And I have, for three years, I've been talking about that, and the people are still coming around, going all the way over to the other sidewalk, and then cutting back in on down the street. Something really needs to be done there, and there was no patch put there.
Yep, that's not the only sheet that we have that issue, I know I've had residents reach out, we have a large hole on Mingo Street that's happening all over. There are, like I said, there's no shortage of needs here in our community when it comes to our road repairs. You'll see on a lot of our roads that you'll see drivers driving on the opposite sides of the roads to avoid the potholes. In our conversation with the employees, we need new equipment. If we had larger rollers or just other pieces of equipment, we could kind of tackle some of these larger potholes and fix them rather than just filling them with hot patch. We have to purchase new equipment, we have to have funds available to do that. So we are not only limited on workers, but limited on resources to get some of this new equipment. So we're well aware that this is an issue, but we're trying to come up with solutions to tackle this, but there's no shortage of need. If you have, there are issues where deep potholes, please let us know so that we can come up with a solution to try to fix this. That's why we are working to get a new street mileage put in place. And just, we talked about this at the town hall, just wanted to reiterate and state for the community, we start with the trunk lines and major roads, that's just per our contract that we have with the state of Michigan. So that is a requirement of that maintenance contract that we have to hit those major roadways, and then we move into our local roads, similar to plowing in the wintertime. You have to start with the state trunk lines, major roads, and then our locals. So with, again, with only five workers, it is going to take some time to get to our local streets, but they are busy, I know they're ready to, ready to tackle the job.
I still like to get a list of patches first and precincts too, because we're not scheduled again until 2024 to have anything in our street.
Well, we don't have, the patching plan isn't broke up in precincts, it's sections.
Yeah, that's what I want, the sections and the precincts.
So Director Miller, like, when do you think that your crew will start tackling this? Like, so for section three?
Well, we got our first hot patch last week, Thursday. Friday was a holiday, and then today is snow. So we haven't got any hot patch since Thursday, but they started on the trunk line Thursday with hot patch.
And then just from history, how long does it take you to kind of get through?
I think it'll take, if we can get decent weather, just a few weeks.
For each section?
If you get snow and rain, it's going to take longer.
Yeah, so like two to three weeks?
For each section, or just, no, just the trunk line, and then we get into the section.
Okay.
So the sections take a lot longer.
Yeah.
They're much worse condition.
Oh, exactly, but, so per section, how long?
We never made it through section two last year.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's another thing, when we get complaints filed with potholes, we kind of bounce around and check those complaints and fill them. So, you know, if people do have reports of large deep potholes, please call in, let us know, we can check them out and fill them.
Yes, Councilwoman Lanu?
That was me, sorry.
Just to confirm, you said you didn't get through the one section, so that's why the other three sections are where you're starting this year?
Yeah.
So it's like a portion of one section, okay. For some reason, I thought you got the whole city last year, and I think that that's where there's a disconnect when people are like, I don't, I don't think so.
Right, yeah, I think we wanted to get through the whole city and do our rotation.
Okay.
We didn't accomplish that goal.
Got it, I never got past section two, okay. Are we good, everyone? Okay. Thank you, Director Miller, appreciate that. Discussion on the press release for redistricting?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. So this is, this was a drafted outline that I thought could be converted into both a press release and a resolution, so that in the future, council would have, be able to look at this and reference this. So I'll just read it out loud for the public record for people who wouldn't be able to read this. So it says, "For the first quarter of 2022, the city of Albion was thrust into tackling the city's redistricting after losing 10% of its population during the last 10 years. This accelerated process created a lot of turmoil within the city and the current council members," I said this with the assumption, "that the current council members will agree that we want to assure, ensure that future councils will be more prepared when this process occurs again. The following items are potential best practices that the city of Albion could adopt in the form of a resolution to include in future planning for the redistricting process. Item number one, future redistricting processes will begin as soon as new demographic data is available." So before reading all these, I just want to say, this was a draft and today is just a discussion, so if there's any feedback on any of this being changed, the language would be changed. But in the case of future census data being made available, no later than August, the following year of the census, so that would be August 2031 or August 2041. Item number two, all council members will be engaged by the city administration as soon as possible, make sure concerns are addressed, ideas are considered, and a consensus is created that reflects the totality of the governing body and its constituents. Item number three, the city administration is encouraged to consult other municipalities or governing bodies regarding best practices for calculating new population data and engaging their communities in the redistricting process. For example, the Calvin County Geographic Information Systems staff were able to confirm that using Dave's redistricting software was in fact a reliable methodology. Item number four, with months of time before the state's deadline for submitting new precinct or ward boundaries, will be engaged in the form of at least two town hall meetings before March of the following year. So again, that would be March 2022, or, excuse me, 2032. With the level of engagement and proper planning completed well in advance of the deadline and initiated by the city's paid staff, no last minute map would be needed or accepted. The first proposed maps would be presented in the fall of the year after the census, and the first meeting in February of the year the maps are required to be submitted, which would be 2032, will be the last time a new map could be proposed. And then the question is posed to my fellow council members and the administration, what are other ideas or suggestions for how the city can better improve future redistricting processes?
All right, do we know when the census is complete? Is it complete in the first quarter or second quarter of the year?
The first round of data is available, was available in April of 2021, but then the demographic data to go alongside the pure population numbers was made available in August 2021.
Okay, gotcha.
And it was delayed this year because of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
And then I guess the only other question is whether the council would like for this to be made in the form of a resolution, so it would be easily accessible for the future councils 10 years from now.
So this is just a discussion, right?
Yes. I mean, I think it should be something, should be laid out as a resolution or whatever, so you don't have to ever go through this. Because one, some details are not in there, you know, what we went through, we shouldn't have had to go through. So if we can help 10 years from now, so they don't have to go through anything like that, this would be my suggestion as well.
I guess my only concern would be like we, I mean, none of us may be here in 10 years, and neither may Colin, although I'm sure he probably would still like to be here in 10 years.
I think that'd be a suggestion for some.
But true, but we do have resolutions that have been made and still people were unaware of them. And I guess I just don't know how you put something in place for somebody to be aware of 10 years down the road, if we've already had issues with council members not knowing what current resolutions are.
Another practice of what they need to be taught when they come in and do it.
I also think because the city has experienced a lot of turnover, the more we get things in writing, the better chance we have of being prepared. But also, I'm pretty sure this is the job of the administration to make sure, so as administration continues to have succession, I would, I would think that this would be a page in the binder that's passed, you know, when there's succession enrolls, typically there's some sort of level of understanding of what's required in an ideal scenario.
Any other comments? All right, city managers report? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any future agenda items?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Tim Jackson?
Yes, the radar signs. Kip and I did discuss that, so you want to put that on, future agenda items.
Or all over the city, or?
We just going to discuss a couple of them, or where they should go?
I think it was obvious when we talked about that the council rules will come back at the next meeting.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lollar?
The, item G, what Councilmember Linnu just got done talking about.
The, like, the formal resolution?
Anything else?
There was one thing that was asked as well, you might could just answer this. And it spoke of, I know we having that, the pickup deck for the trash, trash pickup thing, and they wanted to know, are you gonna ever have electronic recycle again?
That was, I believe, that's scheduled in June, that's hosted by the Calhoun County. So yes, I will include those dates in my, it was the standing item in my manager's report until that.
Okay, all right, yeah, that was a question that was asked. And then, Director Miller, he's in here, so I'll just ask him this question, and I put it on.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Could we revisit the use of the ARPA funds? I just thought about that, as the radars were mentioned, and you mentioned also the, them being used for another expense. Just so we can look at some of the recommendations, and, and then other things that maybe we think are critical to be investing in sooner rather than later.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, one more thing. So, I know we're experiencing problems, you know, with the water and everything, so I'm asking for an update once again of the staff and operation, if you could bring that back for the next meeting. Of a water waste plant.
An update on staff?
Yeah, just to update far as just operation itself, like, what's going on, what's taking place? Yeah, thank you.
Specifically to the water treatment?
The water treatment, the plant, the facility, you go back to the things that I was asking before. I can state those again. I know she said she had put something out before, but just want to know more, just want a more update. I know she put something in and sends it out to the, the residents, but I just believe that we should have something else additional about updating of the treating of the water, update of the operation, and update of the staff, like I, I just said. We need to stay on top of that, like you spoke of as well, when people have different problems in different cities, we want to stay on top of ours, so that we're making them aware as well. Because I know she's doing her best with it, but still, they could get bring to, could be brought to the forefront.
Anything else? Public comments? Does anybody here that would like a, make a public comment? Do we have anybody else?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, Garrett Brown, Albion, Michigan. So I, two things, I wanted to just say thank you to Councilmember Linnu. I think that's a great idea about the redistricting. I paid attention to the process, and I think it didn't, it didn't have to be that way, but I also feel like, like you mentioned, the data had been out for months, since August of 2021, so there were months that we, the city could have done, taken to get that process done in a really fair, public process, so. Also, I, I think what you might want to do, and I, and I, again, this is kind of a compliment to Councilmember Linnu, instead of having it as a resolution, maybe put it as the ordinance, because the charter basically says, you know, the maps are adopted by ordinance, so maybe if you flesh out the ordinance and list that in the ordinance that the charter refers to, then it's in place. So then, whether or not you all are there, or Cullen's there, hopefully there's a, and you can actually, you know, assign that responsibility to the manager or the attorney in the ordinance, and say, you know, by such and such a day, you need to check on this, and move that process forward, so that in the future, if you, if you have a competent city attorney, they're gonna be catching, they're gonna be up on the requirement to do that. The other thing I was gonna say, just to go back to what Markola was saying about the, the council's power to set policy. So I think if, if, if the attorney is saying it needs to go through the manager, I think the council does have the power to, you know, pass a resolution and say, no, we are, we're directing the manager to either create or revise an employee code of ethics that includes similar language, right? Because right now, for example, like, you know, there's a sitting council member who's on the board of one of our community's philanthropic organizations, right? So what, what you basically might do, you might say, well, that elected official can't use information for a particular purpose, but, but again, if there's anyone else in the, in the administration, the manager or her subordinates, who have that information, the, the council rules don't apply to them, and they shouldn't, but I'm just saying that, just to kind of push back on the attorney, that the, the council can set a, a policy parameter for the manager to operate in, and they can direct the manager to create, or, or, or like I said, revise a code of ethics for the staff, so, thank you.
Have anybody else? City Manager's report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so a few updates on my manager's report on our RRC priority sites. Director Arnold and I met with the city's RRC team on Tuesday, April 5th. We discussed the city's three priority sites, which are the Union Steel Properties, 619 Nelson Avenue, and the Denver School property. So we're working with the Calhoun County Land Vague Authority to utilize the available EPA grant dollars to complete environmental testing on all three sites. Been talking with our RRC team, there is $35,000 earmark for the city of Albion to take advantage of for pre-development assistance, so it's very important that we have current information on what environmental issues fall within these properties, and then we can further take advantage of the grant dollars available to help us market, to attract different developers, to kind of redevelop those areas. So stay tuned for more information on that. MADC rental rehabilitation program, so the city administration, we're working with ACE Investment Properties and MADC on a rental rehabilitation program application for 110, 112, and 114 East Erie Street. All of you, that was formerly known as the Albion Food Hub. So through this opportunity, the current mixed-use buildings with both existing commercial and vacant residential units, they will be renovated and got rehabilitated to create new commercial spaces below, and then there are four apartments above that will be rehabilitated and put on, made available for new housing, and new housing option for our community. A potential housing development, so city administration, that's myself, Director Arnold, and Assistant City Manager Joe Ridge, we met with representatives from Marshall Public Schools and a potential developer on Thursday, April 7th, to discuss a potential workforce housing development project here in our community. Right now, it's still in the initial process, so we, I don't have too much and can't really share right now who that developer is and what it is, and we're looking to bring more workforce housing here in the community. So the First Baptist Church, I've met with Pastor Tom Hollywood with First Baptist Church, Monday, April 11th, to discuss potential projects that their organization could assist the city in completing. Prior to pre-COVID, they, every year, they come out and do different projects throughout the community to help make, make our community look better. So we talked about painting fire hydrants throughout the community, as well as there's a brick path that leads down to the main podium in the cemetery. Right now, it kind of receives a lot of wash over, and like, a lot of sand and sediment and rocks collect on that, so they have offered to redo that brick path, so when walking up to that large podium, we don't have any potential trip hazards or any accidents happen. They are looking to get that done before the Memorial Day Parade, because that is the large area that we, the parade ends at, and that's where the ceremony is held, so we're very thankful and appreciative of them assisting the city with that. So I participated in the seventh session for the Albion Leadership Academy on Monday, April 11th. As I stated, we had our first town hall meeting to discuss the potential road knowledge on Monday, the evening of April 11th, at the Marshall Opportunity School Library. The meeting was very well attended, thank you all for attending. So we're still working to coordinate schedules, and we will have several other town hall meetings to discuss this important topic with our residents. So one-on-one meetings have started, Assistant City Manager Ridge and I, we met with all city employees on Tuesday, April 12th, and then we met with all of the DPW employees this morning. So next, we will work with public safety to meet with all public safety officers, both, so that is on our day shift as well as our night shift, so we're just working to get that scheduled, and that will then wrap up, we will have met with every single city employee. And through these meetings, we're just kind of learning, just building relationship with all of our employees, learning a little bit more about what their job entails, and just hearing if there's any areas that we can assist, our office can assist with improving the day-to-day operations for our workers. The MADC, CDBG, Public Gathering Spaces grant application, that was submitted on, I have Wednesday, April 13, but it was actually submitted on Thursday, April 14th, so we're very happy that it scored the improvements to victory part. So hoping to, fingers crossed, hoping to receive good news that our application was granted. Just to want to remind all of our residents, the deadline to file the city income tax is April 30th. That is on Saturday, so it, it has been pushed to that following Monday, so you have until, what is that exact date? Monday, May 7th, oh, 2nd, I'm sorry, to turn in your city income tax. On city, the city-wide cleanup, so that has been scheduled, and it will be held on Saturday, June 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Ketchum and Harris Field. So, summer is quickly approaching, so you're able to bring out any bulk waste or bulk items that you're looking to get rid of, you can take them to both, to either Ketchum or Harris Field. And then, we've kind of, as, so we're starting to have these one-on-one meetings. We've started discussing with our residents on potential summer hours for city operations. So we're looking at four nine-hour shifts, and then a half day on Friday, depending on the department. So for City Hall, that would be Monday through Thursday, it would be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. With our DPW, it is, like I said, we're approaching the summer months, most of the time is spent outside, so they will be starting at 6:00 a.m., so they can kind of get a jumpstart on the work outside before the sun gets too high and really gets hot out there. So they would do Monday through Thursday from 6:00 a.m. until 3:30 p.m., and then on Fridays, from 6 to 11, 6 to 10, or 7 to 11. Right now, those are just initial conversations, and it's, really depends on the department if this will be suitable for, for our departments. I know, unfortunately, public safety, this will not work for them, we can't really tell the community, hey, pause on any crime or anything right now, because we're shutting down at this time. There are 24/7 operations, as well as the city's wastewater treatment plant. We've had discussions with Director Miller, and this does not look like it'll be possible for them, because this, the facility requires them to be there eight hours a day, seven days a week as well. So I just wanted to bring this to council's attention, that we are having conversations on this. This is similar to what the Calhoun County operations they do, so these hours, they would start that Tuesday following Memorial Day, and then they would run until Labor Day, and then after that, we would return back to Monday through Friday, normal operations. So just kind of put it in this outfit, that we are looking to possibly make a change. We're meeting with our employees here at City Hall, they asked if we could stay open later. We understand that we have some residents who work until 5:00, and that's when we close. So by extending this Monday through Thursday until 6:00 p.m., it offers an opportunity for residents who may work right up until 5:00 to be able to come in and handle city business as well. So I will update you as we have finished out those conversations with our city staff. And then also in my manager's report, there are just updates from individual department reports. I don't have one from the EDC, because their April, their April meeting was canceled. Been happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our city manager? All right.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry, I have one question about the, the first thing, the redevelopment-ready communities. Are the pre-development assistant funds annually earmarked to the city, or is that just for those three sites in total?
For this part, the priority sites, it's just for those three sites total. So that could be, they could help us develop marketing materials, they could come in and do like, sessions with our residents where they develop kind of proposed projects that could fill these open spaces, and we could have our residents come back and provide feedback on there. So we're just looking to provide them with updated environmental information, so then we can start moving forward with the next steps and attracting the developer to kind of do something with this vacant property.
Any other questions? Councilmember Emmett? Councilman Lee?
Yes, I would like to thank the city manager and Director Miller as well for the study session we had last week, and the great job that they did communicating out to the community what may end up being a necessary move in the right direction. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed, if you have your hand up. No, Councilwoman Lollar?
Uh, yes, I think this question is for our city attorney. When does filling of precinct five seat, when does that start? And as far as redistricting, when does that take place?
I'm sorry, what about precinct five?
Um, when do we start having to fill that seat?
Uh, so you...
Oh, I'm sorry, six.
Yeah, that's, okay, so yeah, I thought that's what you were talking about, but I wasn't...
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine. So it has to be done, it has to be done within 60 days of when it was declared vacant.
Okay, 60.
So I think that's gonna put you...
Second meeting in May.
It was at a meeting I wasn't at, so it'll be a meeting in May, that it will have to be filled.
So the second meeting in May, right now, the application deadline is this Friday to apply for that, and then we look, just based off the feedback of, I think it was either the study session or regular meeting where we discussed the process and how we're gonna handle this, we're looking to have, depending on how many applicants, or applications we receive, the first meeting in May, we will hold the interviews with the appointment being made by that second, it has to occur at that second meeting in May or else.
Yeah, because it's...
Not meet that criteria.
It's right before the cutoff, yeah.
And when does the redistricting come into effect?
You've already adopted the ordinance, and, and the, so we've changed the local ordinance to change the boundary, and the, you voted to adopt the apportionment plan before the ordinance was adopted, so it's, it's done. I think effective, the effective date of the ordinance was 20 days after the second reading, and I think you did the second reading at the first meeting in March. Let me double-check, though.
So it's sort of mapped off where our districts are now, where our precincts are now?
They just got submitted to the state the first, first week of April?
They were submitted on April 1st, they had to be submitted by April 12th. So now you have to get the state time to redistrict all of the communities to actually go in and physically change the precincts.
I would just say thank you to our city clerk for getting those changes made. Just want to make council aware, from the changes with this new map, we have, there is a section in town or a street in town that touches, what, three or four different precincts. This is going to be very confusing for a lot of our residents who live upon that road, because one road is affected by, runs along three or four different precincts. So we just need to be, inform a resident on where this will change their voting locations, make sure that they are aware of where they need to vote. We will then issue the new voting cards, but just, election days can be kind of very stressful, and if they're used to going to one polling location and now have to go to another, that can cause some, some residents or voters to become upset. We just need to inform them that this, where they need to go, and just, it could be pretty confusing for our voters moving forward.
So, just to answer your question there, Councilwoman Lollar, the, the effective date of the ordinance is April 21, and, but the apportionment plan was filed at the first meeting in March of, which was the 7th, so. Okay?
So April 21st is the effective date?
Of the, of the, yes, of the ordinance which adopted the new map, as far as the ordinance, but as far as the state is concerned, the, the apportionment plan that was filed with them, that Jill was just talking about, that made the changes at the state level, we made the local change, which was effective April 21. For, is, will be effective April 21, because it's only the 18th today.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Senator. Any other councilwoman comments?
So today was a pretty exciting day in Precinct 1. We did the groundbreaking for McIntosh Park. So we had several people who decided to brave the snow and the rain, and the cold, to come out and get money to be a part of that occasion. So looking forward to what Precinct 1 is going to be able to get here within the next, hopefully, four months.
Definitely, definitely. Big thank you to the DeNikola family.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Support.
City Clerk coming in?
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Reed? Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Linu?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes, meeting adjourned 9:08 p.m. We can all remember to turn off our mic.